Martin comes in, we'll clue him in to what's happening. So I'd like to call to order the September nineteenth meeting of the Village of Cold Springs zoning board appeals. This is a workshop only meeting, so no votes. We have got two projects that James is representing both of those. And we're gonna do that, and I'm gonna strike everything else from the agenda because I have not been able to print out the materials that I wanted us to review including the minutes, and that's my fault, so I apologize for that. But we'll get back to that at our next meeting, and I'll also email it to everybody in advance. It's been a little bit of a hectic week.
There is.
And now we're all here. Donald's not gonna be here. So let's get started. Do you have a preference of which age you'd like to do first?
Um, either one. Let's start with Bill, just in case. I know he can't make it tonight, he's still with his family, so.
Okay, so this is.
Bill McComish, twenty-nine Rock Street.
This is twenty-nine Rock Street. Why don't you give us the brief rundown while I press this stuff out?
So he has a very large piece of property. It's um, it's one of the largest classes in the village that I'm aware of, but you know, like it's a single, well, it's actually zoned industrial, right? So um, so um, I'm trying to have a picture on the top of my head, but we have a zoning conformance chart on the second page here, and it's quite large, so most people will need their reading glasses for that. So it is twenty-one, uh, twenty-one thousand square feet, over twenty-one thousand square foot of area, and um.
And it's in the industrial one zone?
Yeah.
Which requires a forty thousand square foot.
Right, which now of course that's really wide and large, right? So what Bill has, he's got two very small residential dwelling units on the, on the property that are existing, right? And so what he would like to do is build a third house on the property, and so, which, you know, and depending on the reading of the R, of the code, you know, could be done with R one. Now the variance that we would need is we can go from one to two or two to three dwelling units on a property that in, for structures that are pre-existing in the code. Now, he's got, um, he's got the two structures, two dwelling units on the property. He would like to, a variance to build a third one under the R one. So that's kind of the second half ask, and I'm asking, kind of putting that forward backwards because the, the first half is the non-conformance to the I one in that it's at twenty-one thousand square feet, it's, it's not meeting the minimum lot requirements that would permit him to, to use, to then go to R one zoning, right? Am I making myself at all clear?
Mm-hmm. Um, so what, can you just?
I'm gonna rephrase that just one more time.
Sure, okay.
So for the, for the R one to be applied for that, so that first, you know, the, 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 so that a variance could be granted to go from two to three dwelling units with a new proposed building, it would, that application of the R one zoning to the I one, um, we would need a variance first on the minimum lot requirements that must be met for the I one. Is that any clearer? I'm confused in my head, so. So um, that's like.
The code to, to, uh, to apply R code, R zoning to an industrial lot requires a minimum forty thousand square feet. What's the rationale for that?
Well, I, I interpret that differently in the zoning code. I think that, so I one would allow you to have three homes, three detached homes if you had the forty thousand feet. And from my opinion, that's the only variance that you need. The reason that it says any use in the R one is applied is just simply to say you can have homes if you want. But if you were to treat it solely as an R one lot, I think what you're talking about where the, um, where you can go from a one to a two or a two to the three, I think that's talking about this within the same building.
Okay.
So you could have, you know, go from one house to two apartments.
Great.
Or two to three. So I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks, but my perspective is that you only, to do this in the, in the I one lot, you need the, um, the lot size variance. But can you just show us exactly where the spot is and kind of give us an idea?
Okay, so um, so twenty-one.
Sorry, nobody can see this.
Yeah. I'm wondering, okay, we just have survey, we don't have that. I should have a larger context map. So, okay, so on Campbell Avenue, there, the tightly clustered workers' cottages, and it's basically here, not this one. It's here, and it looks like that this map, this is Google Maps, right? It's only showing one of the structures, it's missing the one that's down here. So his property is essentially this right here. So it's adjacent to the, um, Percicello's properties over here, and then it's Forge Gate, it backs up to Forge Gate over here. So it's the crest of the hill, and then, um, this, uh, so, yeah.
So one of these is at the bottom of the hill, the one on, so these two are at the bottom?
These two are at the bottom, so this is the one that's that little, little kind of English looking cottage that's immediately on the street.
Right.
And then there's the wooden steps going up to this little house. And then he's got two little sheds over here that would actually be taken out.
And then the, the new, the new house is at the top of the hill?
At the top of the hill, so.
Eric, I took over your question, so back to you.
This is that really steep site.
Yeah, it's definitely a steep site. It's got, it's a lot of exposed bedrock, you know, questionable ability to cut a driveway in there, but you know, he's had a guy come in and he's also talked to Jeff in the office here. He says that really you can go ahead and build that driveway if you want, which I find amazing that he could do that without planning board approval, but.
A new building is gonna have to go to site plan.
Yeah.
So they may have something to say about it. So I guess if Jeff, did Jeff say go ahead and start building it, or just?
He said go ahead and start building, or you can go ahead and start building the driveway if you wanted, which I.
I, I suggest you check with, you check with Matt before you do that.
Yeah.
Because that could be an expensive redo if it doesn't match what he wants to do.
Yeah.
It's all rock too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Could get some dynamite in there?
I mean, you know, it's actually a little, a, a civil engineer that I walked the site with as well as his excavator pointed out that if you were to do something more serpentine, there's, you know, kind of lower, you know, lower little valleys in there that you could actually kind of S curve it up, and it's probably more, kind of more fragmented too, so it's, it's that fissures in there, so.
So in thinking about this, it seems like getting the variance is one option, but there are also two other options that would be more time consuming and may or may not, may or may not work. One would be to ask the village board to rezonate R one, and then you would have to subdivide it, on which I think you're big enough to do.
Yeah, we looked at the possibility of that, and well, of course, these, these are always non-conformant, so, but we did look at the possibility of, you know, like subdividing it like that, and then it's conformant that way. But we figured this is probably in a lot of ways the quicker option, so.
And then the other option would be to wait for the rezoning, or wait for the code update committee to potentially be approved, and then this is gonna become the mixed use, which does not require such a large lot and still allows you to have three separate residences.
Is that I one designation? So it'd be transferring from I one to mixed use?
Yeah.
But now obviously the other, you know, aspect to that though is the steep slopes, which, um, from, it's been a while since I've sat on a code update committee meeting, but I'm assuming that that's still.
Right, there's the steep slopes section in there that's new.
Do you know anything about the grade of the slope and cross comparing with what the new section is?
It's, it's quite rigorous, um, the, the, uh, I had forgotten what the percentage is, but it's, it's going to be challenging for a lot of properties in the village, you know, so.
Do, do you know how your property compares to at current?
It's definitely, well, there's no, no requirement or, there's no code position on steep slopes currently, but it will become an issue on.
I mean, that's something that the planning board would wanna look at. I mean, we, we wouldn't be looking at steep slope.
Yeah.
No, I mean, not, only if there were an environmental consideration
Yeah.
to do with putting a driveway in there on the steep slope.
I would imagine that what's, the natural question though would be that you would have to grant, or consider granting variances for steep slopes, you know, so that it'll probably fall into your arms at that point, but.
So what James is saying is if he were to wait for the zoning change to go through, then
We might be considering.
although he would now be allowed to put three buildings without a variance, there's a new steep slopes potentially regulation which would, I, I don't, I remember hearing about it, but I don't remember what it is.
Yeah.
So that might throw a wrench into the plan of making it easier.
Right.
In addition to it being from six, six months to a year from now, yeah, so.
So, um, there's, we have a site survey in here, it's, this is not, you know, but you can see, oh, and there's actually a location matching map too. So you can get a sense of like the, the terrain is like, so the proposed area is up there at the top of the hill, and it actually gets to be relatively flat compared to, or something to put a driveway.
You might release to it.
Yeah. But even this might even be considered, I mean, 'cause it's, the, what they were looking at is that the basis of this, of a steep slope preservation is, is quite challenging. With so much of Phillips County, I'm back to my.
Well, we, we don't have to get into the, to the merits of it tonight. I think, you know, of course it's up to you which one of those three options you want, and I assume you've considered them, and that's why we've got this. So I think that one objection that we're gonna have to deal with again, we all remember all the talk about Marathon when we were dealing with twenty-one parsonage because of the size of the lot and creating a, potentially creating a precedent. So I imagine we might hear from some of the same people again about fear of setting a precedent on Marathon, and then who knows what could happen if the owner wants to press that.
But have, um, I mean, the, are you talking about back when the owner of Marathon was trying to do the small lot subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause he, he's not looking to subdivide it?
Right, so his, his, so the, the objection that came up at, at our meetings about twenty-one parsonage were that if we granted, well, he had, um, my memory's gonna fail me on this. One of the, one of the concerns was that if we were to allow residents to go in in such an undersized lot, then that would give the Marathon owner cause to reopen his case against the village to put in houses on his undersized lots. So if we've got, I'm just imagining what some, you know, somebody who had an objection that might say, now we're allowing three houses on an undersized lot in the, in the same district, even. So there may be some, some pushback there from, from some people.
And that was community input that brought that up?
But, but I mean, I think it's really different, 'cause it's, compared to R one, this is substantially larger, and you know, we've done this analysis where, um, you know, where we had basically like looked at this as being a separate lot, you know, and I don't like the idea of creating a flat lot, but they, we were able to make everything except for the existing, pre-existing non-conformity work with that. You know, so we had the seventy-five by seventy-five, and we had all the, the minimum lot area size covered for both, for both lots. So it, it wasn't a situation where we're looking, even in the subdivision scheme that we considered, we were looking to, uh,
Go under.
for variance to go undersized. And, and I remember specifically in the, you know, situation with, um, the Marathon site was that they were, I mean, 'cause part of it was that they were trying, they were trying to make the subdivision and then, you know, creating all these, you know, basically self-created hardships in making these small lot subdivisions in the first place, and then building houses on them.
Yeah, they may have even been claiming that it was already subdivided, which I think was up for, up for debate.
Yeah, that was the whole thing of using roads that didn't exist.
Right.
So I, I don't think that's much, you know, like an applicable concern.
Yeah, I, you know, as, as John First, the village attorney always says, every case is unique, and we can find the unique things here to, you know, grant or deny variances if we want.
I mean, one slight advantage to this location is that it's so steeped, somewhat a little bit out of view as opposed to having homes sitting on top of each other. There's a little space, you have another home, the other house is down a little right.
Yeah.
Where are the buildings on the adjacent lots? There's this one here, is there one here or here?
Um, let's see. So there's, um, there's, okay, so let's see.
Oh, there's a driveway.
Yeah, the driveway, the, the house is like right here, and sort of, it's not showing it, but the Campbell Avenue is basically right there. So it's that little, little
Oh, yeah.
the house with the porch right there, directly, you know, so here's Pam Colangelo's house that has a great stone wall. So it's like, there's the one house right there, and then there's the, the little box here, and then the, the brick house in the corner, and then there's the, the boulevard over there. And so there's another house here, and then, then, or here, I think, is Forge Gate.
And what about the rock ledge, Eric, up here?
Up here, uh.
It's pretty much set off.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing here. This is, uh, the old school building there.
That's right.
And then there's actually kind of a development up here.
So you'd be coming next to the school, pretty much next to the school, right?
Um, you know, so we're looking to build the house about there.
Yeah.
And so this old school building, which is now, well, you know, actually, I think three, three dwelling units. It's all dwelling units, but I think it's three dwelling units in this one structure here.
Is that grandfathered that way, or?
Uh, yeah, but in, in that way it would be, you know, like here you've got three dwelling units. This, one of these over here is, and I'm not sure if this is one lot or, or what, but there's two dwelling units directly adjacent to each other, and then you have Forge Gate. So there's the precedent of more than one dwelling unit on these lots is certainly, it's transactional.
There's nothing pressing up against the, the property line that we should have that?
No.
All right, let's, um.
How many other, you know, industrial lots have two or more buildings on it dwelling? Does anybody know anything about that, in case somebody asks?
Well, the other occupied industri, the other built-up industrial parts are down by the impel, impelatory gas station, and then the house next to that, and.
That's two dwellings. There's.
Those are, those are separate lots, I think.
Well, wherever he has several apartments upstairs from it, um, the house, it used to be John Teagle's old house, directly next to the old Ford dealership, has, um, I think two dwelling units, maybe three. And then, um, you know, there's the, the Ford dealership from it, plus, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, that, Teagle's old house, I think, has two, they expanded a little bit on the big one.
Right, I think that used to have two, and then the, the studio space out the front, but I think they, they ended up, the, the main house, all a single family, you know.
Yeah, G one, yeah.
You know, in the B one, there's also some pretty good examples, you know, that's different from I one.
Um, so let's review the application, make sure you've got everything, and then we can really go. So Jeff confirms that you've established the escrow and you've paid the application fee. We've got, uh, we have a letter from the owner that you can represent, William McComish. Got the completed application itself. I saw a list of neighbors somewhere, on the top. So we've got a good list of neighbors. If I could see these on the map a little better.
Yeah.
Can you describe where the, um, the name, where these properties are that you have posted?
Yeah, we could look at the thing that you have there.
Denise Catrongo, I'm not sure, that is the woman who owns this, the old public school.
Okay.
Uh, twenty-one Campbell Avenue, so I'm not sure which one that is. Twenty-nine and thirty-one Campbell. I'm not sure, that, those, those may be these over here, the two houses.
Right, on the, on the corner of Rock and Campbell, that one that's right, right up against the street.
Right, and then the, the one that's like this, you know, very boxy one that's adjacent to that.
Okay.
And then Percicello is the brick house in the corner. And he owns it, um, one through seven, the boulevard. If that's, if that's a single lot, there's a very good example of multifamily, or multiple dwelling units on a single lot.
Yeah, that might be a good example to,
Yeah.
to pick that up, show, basically if you get a, you know, a diagram of the lot and show how their situation. I mean, we could help the application to point out.
Um, so, and I apologize, I don't have this, you know, down cold, 'cause my employees pulled this out while I was on vacation. But, and then thirty Rock Street, Michael Rosman, who's, uh, who's directly across the street. Let's get one into here. Rock Street, so this is McComish, so he's in one of the tiny little houses here, one of, one of these tiny little houses there. The little foundry one.
Yeah, there's a bunch of little houses.
Yeah, tiny little lots. I'm not sure which one, but I, he might put that one. Twenty-eight Rock Street, um, James McFrad, I'm, I'm, you know, plus one square foot, I, I don't know which ones, these, you know, across the street, and then, um. And there's a, one house there, now, what I'll do is, um, I'll take photographs or, you know, get, you know, whatever records would support, um, but you know, there's a, one wood frame in the house across the street that is, um, I think, three stories of apartments. There's a cou, a couple, you know, right there, so.
Uh, yeah, that's just down the street a little, across the street and down the street, yeah, on right-hand side.
Yeah, it's on the opposite side.
It's going west, yeah.
Yeah.
James, can you just point them out?
Yeah, here we are.
So, so Eric.
Okay, so this is, so this is Percicello, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know, I know this is two families here, yeah, see that, it's like double there, it's two families there. Um, and I'm thinking that this is one, one single lot, so it might be as many as five dwellings on one lot. So McComish is two, two dwellings, this one right there, that's hidden by trees, that tiny little side.
Is that the school to the left of the pencil?
That's the, that's the school.
Okay.
Yeah, so here's this little one right there.
Okay.
And then, um, then the one that stepped up the hill.
And your proposed, uh, site for the, right about there, yeah.
So yeah, so, so you can see this is his site here, and then this
So it's a little open up in that area?
Yeah, yeah, that's great views out towards the mountains, and wants to have houses up there and take them in. And so Michael Rosman's house is this one right here, which is, um, it has a, a party wall with this house adjacent to it.
And that's all one lot?
No, the, this is Michael Ros, right, there's this tiny little one, and then this skinny one here. There's actually a studio apartment in this garage, over this garage right there, so I mean, two, I'm not sure if they're legal, but, um, and this house, I think, might be the multifamily, or it's this one or the other. You know, it is multiple plans.
I know that this lot used to be two and became one recently, when one of the owners, there was a, a, um, an issue about getting back, having access to the rear house through the front, so they both are now one owner.
Okay, is that, is that the zone out?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
So I guess what I would like for you to double check is that anybody who can see where the driveway's gonna go
Yeah.
is on this list, and it just has to be the owners, of course.
Pam Colangelo over here.
So the driveway's right there where you just had your, just, just after the turn into Rock Street on the left-hand side?
Right here.
There you go.
Of course, it flows this way, so you wouldn't be turning it around like that.
So what would be the length of the driveway roughly?
Uh, I think about, I shouldn't know, hundred and twenty-five feet or something like that.
So, all right, so let's continue going through the list, and then we can decide how to, how to deal with the list of neighbors. Okay, so we've got the deed, did we have that? I'm not seeing that. So I'll need a copy of the deed, is that something that will be easy for you to get?
Yeah.
Okay. We have no design plans, right, or they?
Just, we have, we have simply that plan, so do you, you want amassing plan, or amassing like elevations?
Yeah, we need to, we need to see what the building's gonna look like.
Okay, 'cause all we're, right now we're just, we wanted to not get too into design, just simply, because we wanted to see if it was permissible. You know, I mean, it will go in front of the historic review board if we get the variance moved forward.
Well, we need to s, we, we always get a, a plan of what the building looks like.
Mm-hmm.
You know, from the side and the front, and, and sometimes, you know, because they have it, they'll show us what the various stories look like. So we don't know how tall the building is gonna be,
Yeah.
um, what the porch is gonna look like, we don't know exactly, you know, if this is all going to be under the roof, or maybe part of it's the porch, and so that is, um.
Yeah, I was trying to save him on these if it wasn't gonna fly, so, um, I mean, I can do them diagrammatically, but to get into any kind of design concept is kind of heavier lift, I mean, or something that may not fly.
Yeah. All right, so, so, so far we're missing the deed and the design plan, and then perhaps to double check the list of neighbors. We've got the environmental assessment form, and we have the conformance chart, which, I mean, assuming that you're settled on this size, this exact shape and size and location of building.
It's actually larger than what he wants, but it was, the idea is that we're getting approval for something and actually going smaller. If he really wants a cottage and, like, two stories.
Okay. Um, so that's what we're missing, and. And I'm, I understand the, uh, you know, the wish to not have to pay for design plans if you don't know it's gonna be possible. But that's pretty much what everybody has to go through when they come, when they come here for a project of this size, for sure.
Yeah.
So. Um, I guess there's two, two ways we can, we can look at it, one is that we can tell you, this is what you need. That we were okay with holding a public hearing down the road.
Hmm.
For, um, for the lot variance, the lot size variance, when you have the design plans already.
Hmm.
Or we can, um, I mean, that might be. Uh, you know, I don't know when, when you're ready to do that.
Hmm.
Um.
I mean.
I, I think the, is there any, I don't see any other way that we can, we can issue a variance for that.
Hmm.
Without knowing what the building is gonna look like.
I mean, you know, they, at least the instructions used to be, um, you know, like, don't spend. You know, it was like balanced, clearly balanced writing, because it was very kinda like.
Construction plans is what we don't wanna see.
Okay. Um, alright, so, you know, given that it still has to go through historic review board and, you know, like, it's, you know, very early in the process. If there's, if it's conforming in a, on the number of, um, square feet, you know, co- consistent, reasonably consistent. With this square foot area, the height, the number of stories, you know, all, the, the, the basic elements of the design. But there's, who knows to say exactly, you know, through the design process, where that plans. If that's significantly different from what we submit to you in terms of kind of aesthetics and proportions, but still is compliant to the. Intent for granting the variance.
See, aesthetics are a little bit different and, you know, historic review board would look at that, you planning, but. What, what, what we look at with zoning in, in part is bulk.
Right.
And, and, and people, when they're looking at the, at the hearing and they're trying to figure out. You know, roughly what's going up, what it's gonna look like on the property and especially when variances are sawed.
But it. Yeah, cause I'm thinking, like, if we're showing it so that it's, that the bulk is at its maximum going to be, you know, like, this square footage is really arbitrary. What, what did we say?
Eleven forty.
Eleven forty, I mean, like, that was about the total square footage anyone on the house for the two stories, so like, the, you know, it's really. What we're looking at is actually a footprint, it's half that, you know, and so if it's something that fits within that, you know, the, the footprint, that's. Compliant to the, um, lot area coverage, it's compliant to setbacks, and it's compliant to that building height. Um, we're thinking that, you know, like, as long as it fits inside of this box and then goes to the historic review board for approval, then that we're okay, but.
Um, well, I think that gets, that gets you half the way there, the other half is that the public will wanna see what kind of building is gonna go on that lot. In order to, um, have an opinion on it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, actually, his reference is the Higgins House. The Higgins House, like.
Which one is that?
That's the, it, it's a, it's a little cottage in Canada somewhere that's got good hickey. It's this cute little.
Do you have, do you have photographs of it?
Yeah, um, he sent me some inspirational images of the Higgins House, so.
Well, I mean, if you, you know, bring photographs of what the intent is, if, if that's what he's holding to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, we also have to, when, when we grant a variance, we have to have a stamped plan that goes to the building inspector.
Yeah.
So he can see that what we've approved is, is actually what gets built.
Right, well, that's substantially compliant, right, I mean, it's, and that's my, that's my question back to you, is that if we. If we design something for him that's conceptual, but like, over time, I mean, proj- projects change a lot in the process and.
Almost all of them do.
Yeah.
So what they do is they get, you know, they just check with the building department saying whether we're varying the plans a little bit, and yet you're staying in conformity with whatever the historic review board says, you know.
And that's, that's what I'm not, you know, what I'm getting at here, is that, you know, like, i- if, if it's. You know, like, if it's materially compliant with the, the variance that you grant, but, you know, it's different architecturally, that, you know, like, you look at it and go, well, it's not the same building. Even though it's got, you know, essentially same lock area coverage, same height, same, you know, square footage, and it's not, you know. It's not a, um, bagpipe factory or something like that.
Yeah, I don't think we necessarily get into approving what the building is going to look like, we just need to know, again, the bulk.
Right.
Just to understand. You know, we're, in a residential or even like in, you know, industrial, but a lot of residential all around, just to see what it's gonna look like in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's it, so it doesn't have to be pinpointed with the way it's gonna turn out.
Right.
I think really what we're asking for is just really just like a quick massing, right, like, it's really just like, it's this many stories, it maybe has a garage on this side, you know, like.
Right.
It has a bunch of windows, or is it something?
You, you, there is, you're talking about different things from what I'm hearing, so I just wanna make sure that.
Um, well, I think what I would like to do is check with, uh, the village attorney to, to see exactly how far we need to. Or how, how loose we can get from having a very specific, um, plan, because I, I, um, I'm nervous that, uh. If we say, okay, you can, you can build anything that conforms in this square.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's still, you know, there's an, a wide range of things that could happen that, that the public would wanna know about before.
Right. Well, and then, and a, a different thing would be, even if it's, you know, it had a very locked in design or, you know, a pre-designed thing, you know, that, you know, we know that's not gonna change, but. You know, it could also move around in this, in this central triangle here, so it's, you know, like, you know. Cause this would be compliant to setbacks and it's still compliant to lot area coverage, but that would be one of those.
But if you move it around, I mean, people, when they come for the hearing, they're anticipating it's gonna be in a specific location, otherwise they'll have objections or not objections.
Yeah, well, I mean, one factor in it could be that, you know, like, the excavator breaks, you know, like, five hammers trying to break the rock to get up the hill, you know, and so he decides, well, we're not gonna put it up here, and we're gonna slide it down.
Then you'd have to just bring new plans in.
Okay, right.
Isn't that what, what's usually done?
Um, that has never happened in my time on the board, but I think that would.
They usually bring in new plans.
That would work.
And, and, and they have to get reapprovals.
But that part, that makes sense to me, like, the zoning board sort of approves the location and the overall massing, and then it has to go to architectural review to, for, for the plan and for whatever the exterior. Facade looks like, you know?
Mm-hmm. Um, well, I, I see the, I see the point of, the variance that you're applying for has actually nothing to do with the building itself.
Hmm.
Just has to do with the lot. The lot area, the lot size variance, so if.
Yeah, but it's not that, it's about three dwelling units, isn't it?
No, because my understanding is that, that you can build now three dwelling units on a, on a conforming industrial lot.
Yeah. Okay, I got it, so.
So once we make this conforming industrial lot in the variance.
Right.
Then you can build three, three houses. But the, um, because a variance is required.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, part of the variance of, part of the rationale for granting the variance is that what you're actually going to build. Um, fits in with the character of the neighborhood and.
Right.
We can't really know that without, without seeing what it's gonna be.
Building design and everything, but I think you're, you've got the right idea, just check with the village attorney, get it, you know. I, I, on the whole, I mean, we've always had plans.
Hmm.
Yeah, in order for the public to see what is intended, and, you know, slight things, small things change, change, but not necessarily where the building's gonna be located on the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And not necessarily, uh, you know. When, when, when a, when a building changes, I mean, that's what the neighbors are gonna look at.
Yeah, no, and, you know, like, you know, like, floor plans and all that, you know, obviously we do that, the, the one thing that's very different about this lot. Being so large, is that usually we don't have any other option of where to put something, and that's why we're asking for a variance, you know. So the reason for asking is just, is a very different one than any one that I've presented here before, because, you know. He can put it anywhere except it's a third thing, I mean, like, if he were to, if he were to expand this right here, we, we wouldn't even have a, be having a conversation right now.
Right.
Um, if he were, he were to expand it right here and have it as two different dwelling unit, you know, two now, three dwelling units.
That'd be fine.
That'd be fine too, right, so, okay. So, yeah, so it, the, the ask is very different from the usual reason for asking for variance.
So, uh, it sounds like you're, we have time to, to, uh. We don't have to hold a public hearing next week, next, at our next meeting on this.
Yeah.
That'll give us time to check, check with John first.
Mm-hmm.
And you can, um, put together the, you know, double check the list of names and track down the deed.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then we can come back and, um.
I think that sounds great.
And, uh, and see where we are.
Yeah.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, yeah, cause, you know, potentially, maybe we could decide the issue of the variance. But with the condition that it doesn't approve development until we find out where the building would go. And, you know.
Uh, could, would it be possible for, um, us to give, leave it up to the applicant, um, give the applicant the choice of. Um, having a hearing without specifics and, um, seeing if the public objects, um, and, and the board. And if it's, um, or, um, spending. Resources for a more developed plan and then coming with that application.
Good.
Hmm.
Um. It, it's, he might, the applicant might s- might present, um, a general su- proposal like this, and. If nobody objects, the public does not object, and, um, with the understanding that the house will comply with building code and, and all other aspects of zoning.
And there would also be a, a, a further application as to where the house would be situated.
Um.
So variance would be one thing, but, you know, the bulk.
Well, since the application doesn't concern the house, it concerns other, another aspect.
Mm-hmm.
And another issue. I'm wondering why, um, why wouldn't it be more up the applicant to decide how, um, in the interest of his own application, how specific to be. Realizing that the fewer details, the harder it's gonna be.
We can grant, it, it, it can be a limited variance in a sense of whether or not you, we approve a third dwelling. For this lot, and then they can't just put it anywhere, cause they couldn't put it in setbacks or anything out without seeking more variances.
Right.
And.
Like, I don't know if I would care, like, since I haven't thought about it, I haven't received the official application, I don't know if I would care, maybe I don't care as a voting member where it is in here.
Hmm.
From, um, taking into account all the factors. So if, if that's the case, but maybe the applicant should have the, 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 um, choice to come with, with a vague application. Because possibly the public and the board members won't care, uh, whether there's a porch or not, a garage or not, um, since none, none of those things require variances.
I mean, we could, what we'll do in the end is, we just said, we'll, we'll check with, uh, village attorney.
Uh.
And you can be in communication with James, and we, we need another workshop anyway, right?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's no, you don't have a problem in us delaying for, for another two weeks or three weeks.
No, no, it's, I, I think that that deliberation is helpful, you know.
Alright.
And, and I, because I, I agree with Eric's thinking that, you know, it's, um. You know, the, 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 so much of this is actually by right, so, you know, it's really the third, you know, you know.
Yeah, it is, once you get the, I mean, once it becomes conforming, then it's by right, but by now, right now, none of it is by right.
Conforming, right, exactly.
So, that's, I think, where the.
Yeah.
The, the problem comes in for whether the public gets to see what you're gonna build.
Yeah, no.
So let me check with John.
Okay.
And I'll be in communication with you and, and I'll pass on, you know, John's comments and put them in the record.
Hmm. Great.
For our next workshop and, um, ideally you, you can come back on this, at our next meeting.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll give, you know, I'll fill out as much of these asks as possible and, and give you some images and a floor plan at least of the Higgins Higgins House.
Yeah, you know, if you can also, uh, bring some photographs.
Yeah.
That really helps, you know.
Yeah.
Of the lot. Of the neighborhood, across the street, you know, different areas, and if you can get, uh, an overview, satellite image of the area, so we can point out things real quick.
Right, yeah.
Let's see, the last thing is, um, it might be, since the variance is what, it's gonna be a nineteen thousand square foot variance for the, right? I mean, if it's forty thousand minimum.
I think, is it, how much is it, twenty one thousand or twenty five thousand?
It, it relies twenty one thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty one thousand, so it's like in around nineteen thousand. Looking at some of the other industrial zone lots, find out what their square footage is, I mean, I, you know, it's gonna sh- give you. An ability to say, these are other lots that are in the village and this is the circumstances they have. And yet they have three dwellings on a, or they have seven, or they have two, or they have four, um.
In some ways, that'll be kind of answered by, you know, like Percicello, I'm sure is owned industrial, um, the.
It, it, it would be helpful to your application, I mean, it, it would just give us rationale to.
Yeah, um, Forge Gate would be zoned industrial, you know, so.
I think Forge Gate is.
Is that?
I think it's R three.
R three.
Yeah.
R two.
Yeah, high, high density.
Um, okay, so, so that's good, we've made some progress on what we need to know, and we will, um, come back to that for our next meeting.
Anything else you can think that he might need, you know, since he's here?
Uh.
Not really, yeah.
I think photos would be, would be helpful, it is kind of hidden back there, and, I mean, maybe not. Um. Maybe we don't need them for the next meeting, but definitely by the public hearing, you'll, you'll be able to show the public.
Yeah. Yeah, and what we typically do is, you know, kind of, you know, Photoshop in, you know, into the, you know, like, place a lot of trees too. The Photoshop in that proposed dwelling in context, so.
Um, we can, um, I mean, if the board wants to, we could even schedule a site visit and go take a look at it, since it is completely hidden from.
That would be helpful.
It would be helpful, especially to get an idea of the driveway and how we cut up between the properties, how far off of the neighboring, uh, property driveway?
Do you wanna hold this?
Um, the one that we proposed is, um, is, um. Pretty tight to the driveway, or to the property line.
To the property line, right? What, what would you estimate?
It's like, say, two feet.
Two feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, um, and then for.
So, should we move on to the next one then, this is, um, everybody, you ready? This is two oh seven Main Street. Which is the light yellow or tan.
Yeah.
House kind of across from the church.
It's on the corner of, um, of.
It's a little further down, isn't it?
Uh, it's right at the corner of Main and Academy, so the Presbyterian Church is directly adjacent to it.
Okay.
We have some, oh, we do, actually, we have a historic, um, this is the, um. Sand one, so what we're asking a variance for is that she wants to recreate the historic porch that has been removed from the house. Um, of course, you know, a house that was built in eighteen thirty or maybe earlier. It's at, this framing actually is, is posthumian, like, cune posthum, so it's, this could be from eighteen hundred. But, um, the porch was removed at some time, but the old sandboard maps actually show it. Um, and, um, and we were able to scale off of those, uh, because there are other dimensions that we can work from, and, uh, and it's consistent with the, kind of the vestiges.
This one kind of had this in the plans, so, just figured I'd skip this one right there.
Yeah.
Anywhere.
Are there porches on, uh, the houses up and down the street?
Yeah, so you can see in the sand one, uh, that all of the houses have full porches. Um, some of them, you know, on, on her block and across the street as well. Um, further down, there's a mixture of, of small stoops and then full porches too, so the dash lines of the porches. Um, some of those have been altered since then, but it's still pretty much consistent today. So. So, um.
Is that the historic map in in this package?
Uh, it should be. It's in the uh, it's in the A ten.
C D A ten. So it is the one right on the corner?
Yeah, so it's essentially like her property now has been, you know, like, for some reason, they took away a big part of that corner there. And then basically, I think it's right to the front of the house, like literally the side of the house is the property line. Um, so it's, you know, maybe even a little deeper than that. She's got a little garage back there that's existing. So it's in the site line here. Um. Oh, I'm sorry, no, it's it's her, it's four foot, four point one feet from according to the survey, from the front of her house to the to the property line. So we're proposing to build the porch, the the floor of the porch to the to the property line, but the roof would overhang it a little bit because it's, you know.
Well, they're going to be steps?
Um, no, actually, um, we're also looking to build um a stone retaining wall because when they regraded the street and put in the sidewalks, they actually caused. The grade to change and it actually back pitches to the house and is rotting her her, um, the cell of her house and causing it to to subside and that's something we're trying to correct. So we wanted to put in retaining walls here to correct the pitch to get it to drain away from the house and then direct water down to, you know, drywall or perfect type or property. But the um. Well, it's actually not on the placex, but in the front yard area, um.
So did the village, have you looked at just buying that from the village?
Um, we haven't looked at that yet. So there's a rendering of what we're proposing, there'd actually be steps down from the sidewalk to to get to her porch level.
Okay.
Cause it's higher sidewalk sidewalk than her house.
So you'll have to get permission from the village board to to do that work on the village property.
Mm-hmm.
And then if they give you that permission, then then we don't. Um, then you'll you'll be fine just building steps or a ramp or whatever you need to there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a little bit, just one step down, actually.
Okay.
Um. So here you can see we're proposing to the porch to stop at the property line and then porch roof to run a little bit at the corner. Those, because it's slightly splayed from the the street.
Okay, and that's a good. So the variance that's requested is for um a greater area, the porch, the area of the porch extending into the setback is larger than is permitted by the code.
Right, exactly, there there is a, there's a amount that's permitted, but it's since it's a larger porch, so we need a variance on that portion.
Alright, so let's see, um, it looks like we're missing the deed again and also, but we've got the design plans this time here.
So just just email me a picture of the deed today, so we've got that.
Okay.
We'll have that for the.
And then the neighbor list might might actually be a little bigger than this. If my map ever starts working again on there.
So the the grade drops off, right, behind the house? The land, does it?
Behind, yeah, it it slopes a little bit down this way, it's pretty gradual. Uh, well, you know, it's, you know, so the the basement is, it's a walkout basement at the rear.
Hmm.
Down to towards the pool, so her her kitchen is this one story portion down here and there's a basement access right there. So it'd be slip, yeah, should have just slipped down.
Other other, uh, you know, the houses on the block, are they built out towards the sidewalk?
Yeah, it's totally consistent, you know, all the all the houses in the row are, you know, still basically there from the original sandboard.
Yeah, getting photographs and going, you know, up going down and everything would help us uh make.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Comments to say it's uh consistent with the neighborhood.
Right.
Not out of character.
And also how, um, where the front edge, the front line of the porch is with um regard to the neighboring porches.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's sticking out further or in line or behind or.
Yeah, it's that it's a little tricky to get in photographs, cause the the trees kinda block it.
Um, well, I apologize that I don't have a good map, so we can confirm the um. The list, but it would seem to me to be more than this. Again, you want everybody who can see the porch.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess what I would propose is that, um, if the board agrees, we we vote to hold the public hearing for this one at our next meeting.
Hmm.
And I will, if the board agrees, um, follow up with James to get the full list of the um neighbors. And then you'll need to bring the deed.
Okay.
And everything else was here, right?
Yeah.
So there's a, and paid with Jeff, and there's a conformance chart in here.
So you feel that, um, you know, in the, you know, with the addition of, you know, the deed, the photos and and um contacts. As well as the the larger contact list, um, it's, you're only voting on the porch and you're okay to move forward with that vote?
Yeah, that's the only thing we're voting, we have the forest.
Right, cause the stone walls, that's not a setback issue, that's a village, that's an ownership issue, yeah.
Yeah, you have to, you have to deal with the village board for that.
So what we would be doing is, uh, if the, you know, village doesn't have or has a problem with building a wall. There's just nothing you can do with the variance that we give you, I mean, right, that's.
Well, the the porch is, you know, kind of independent, she wants to put the porch back and it was my realization that with the rotting cells and the the the.
To put the wall in it.
The original grade, it's that the wall's necessary to correct that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that it's not, the porch isn't contingent on it, it's the survival of the house that's contingent on it.
You're right, but that's something that's beyond our purview.
Yeah, it's separate, yeah.
Yeah, and the village doesn't have a great record maintaining its walls or or disputing the walls, so you might end up owning it, I'm guessing.
Uh-huh.
They might say, if you're gonna build a wall, you're gonna own it.
Yeah. And the and those walls aren't consistent with the neighbors down the street, cause that's always.
And I think on a liability level, that that would be the case as well, if you're making the uh land something other than what is natural.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the village would wanna take that obligation because it becomes more of a a created, you know, hazardous if anything happens.
Hmm. Right. Great.
Does that, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, so, John, um, John first has advised me that we should have a vote on moving something to a public hearing, so if somebody would make a motion and.
I'll make a motion to move this application, is there a particular number, it's two oh seven Main Street, uh, for a public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so at our next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, I will follow up with you on the instructions for doing that, I'm sure you're very familiar with them and also. Um, to get the full list of names.
Great, yep.
And we'll need to to get that settled because Monday will be the last, the last day that you can get these out in.
What about the sign?
Yep, you'll have a sign and the instructions for that are.
Are not correct, yeah, and um, I'm sorry, and what is the date of the hearing?
Um, third, thank you.
October third? Third, so soon, huh, great.
When will we put a sign out on Rock Street? Just once we get the application final?
Um, yeah, once we schedule the public hearing.
Once the, you already passed passed workshop, right?
Yeah.
Cool, very good. Uh, yeah, and this was approved by the historic review board already.
Okay.
Great.
They're very sensitive, actually.
Yeah. I I looked at it and I saw the two old posts where it looks like the porch used to be.
Yeah, exactly.
I was looking at the red house.
Yeah. It's cool and you can see that the boards, you know, like where the porch was, you know, something you can see in that era, you know, kind of. I think the the roof line was altered, you know, it's like like so back to the federal style era era, they have the flat boards, you know, the boards, you know, uh, shift lapsed, flat to the porch area. And then everything else is, um, it's uh, yeah, shift up and then um lap siding where the porch wasn't, so.
So they have currently a big problem with runoff coming down and.
Yeah. They're they're jacking the house actually in the corner.
Alright.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, James.
Alright.
So again, I apologize, um, about removing those other items from the agenda, I'll look at those next week.
Okay, all set?
Yep.
And we've closed the workshop.
Alright.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're done, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Eric, thanks, Eric.
So grab this stuff back.